All this meeting in order, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody tonight, and can we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Enstanding?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Wolshimer?
Here.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Craig?
Here also, thank you very much. Are there any changes to the orders of the day?
There are none.
Very good, and do we have anybody in the audience who would like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight? This is our oral communications section. Do we have any blue cards or at all? Okay, seeing none, I will ask if there are any written communications.
Make sure everyone knows where everything is.
Yeah.
If anyone's looking for the restroom facilities, they're just in the hall there to the left? Okay.
Maybe you'd like to go.
Um, I'm sorry, you've written?
Written, we don't have any.
We have no additional written communications, correct? It came in since the packet, no, we have none.
Okay, so items one through four compromise or comprise our consent calendar. And would anybody like to pull any items? Okay, seeing none, would anybody like to make a motion? See if my little motion light shows up here?
Quickly.
Click in, everybody.
That doesn't show.
It's seconded. All right, I see a motion.
And a second.
And a second, very good. Okay, can we have the vote, please? All right.
Oh, this is great.
All the votes are in, can you please call for the vote and?
I think I deserve a small round of applause.
I gotta say.
Works.
And it's done it.
In action. Perfect.
All right, so now to the main body here. Item number five, city council consideration of the approval of an updated schedule of user and regulatory fees. And who will be starting this?
Tonight we have, is it pronounced Madsen?
Yep.
Terry Madsen is returning for a re-prive. He helped us, or he was the project manager on the study and presented to you at the last meeting. And tonight we are back and he's gonna make a very brief presentation.
Great, hello again.
Hello again, good evening Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you again. I will be very brief because you received a detailed presentation at your April 17th meeting. Since that time, a notice has been published, providing opportunity to review, for interested parties to review the materials, ask any questions, and for us to receive any feedback. Just as a quick refresher.
Oh, I'm sorry. You still have one more modernization that has yet to come.
Okay. Trey, do you need that? As a quick refresher, at the April 17th meeting, we referenced that your current fees under-recover the city's cost of providing services. We conducted a full, comprehensive cost of service study, and the proposed fee schedule recommends recalibration of fees. Several fees target full cost recovery, but there are still instances where less than full cost recovery is targeted, particularly for items like appeals, or tree removal permits, or minor grading permits, things like that, where we might find a community benefit of encourage compliance over enhanced cost recovery. During the last council meeting, you provided the following feedback, and this gave you a couple weeks to digest and sort of ponder before this evening's true consideration. The feedback we received from the council just generally was potentially considering continuing the subsidy for solar permits. So today, the city does not have a permit fee for solar installations. They are permitted projects, but there is no fee for it. The proposed fee schedule moves a permit fee to the city's minimum permit fee of $159. That's still less than full cost recovery for solar permits, and it would be in line with other fees collected by other jurisdictions for similar permitting throughout the region. The other comment we received was the idea of the appeal fee being increased. Our proposed fee schedule recommended moving the appeal fee to $1,000, which is still significantly less than the city's cost of service. These are very, they occur extremely rarely. The city works hard to not, to work with applicants before we reach an appeal stage. But if it, if something does move to the appeal, it's an expensive process. The current fee is $360. The proposed fee of $1,000, we felt like lined up with this move towards more cost recovery while still significantly subsidizing appeals. But council mentioned that that may be just one for reconsideration. And then finally, there is a service provided by city engineering primarily, which is final map review. So if a project wants to subdivide, it goes through a tentative map process and ultimately a final map process. Both of those processes are provided by the city, but today, there is no fee on the books for final map review. And there is a proposed fee for final map review of $3,000 for subdivision map.
And did you mention the noticing that we did?
Yes, so there was two published notices, and I think the materials have also been available on the city's website, so.
They have, and there was also posted on Nextdoor a couple of times, and we did send it to all the persons who are on our general distribution email list, which is quite, quite large.
So the action being recommended before the council this evening is to adopt the proposed schedule of fees at the conclusion of a public hearing. I will conclude my presentation now, but I'm available to answer any questions or receive any additional feedback you have.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Terry or any other members of staff? Okay, and seeing none at this time, I will open it up for public comment. Would anybody like to speak? Do we have any speaker cards for this item? Okay, so seeing none, I'll bring it. Sure, come on up.
Just a couple of comments. I may have missed the previous discussion of this. I don't recall seeing any notices or getting anything in email. What I got was, was when the agenda came out, I saw the, I saw the fees. And perhaps these are perfectly reasonable, but it's around, if I'm reading this correctly, it's around $350,000 in incremental revenue for the city. And I, seems like a lot, that's a significant portion of your budget. And I'm just kind of surprised that there hasn't been more discussion of this and more involvement with the citizens. I would, I would argue that, that perhaps there was adequate outreach and I just missed it, but I sure didn't see much calling people to, to comment on this. And I noted your comment about, about the full cost recovery. I'd like to delve into what that means. It seems to me that, that if you're performing services and the cost of, and you're gonna, and you're not recovering your cost, and you're gonna, you're gonna try to recover that, that you look at incremental costs. You look at incremental variable costs, not necessarily fully loaded costs, because you've probably already got your overhead paid for. So that makes me wonder if maybe these numbers are larger than they ought to be. And I guess, I don't really have an axe to grind here, but I'm just arguing that, that maybe it would be better if we could postpone this a little bit and actually do some serious outreach to the community. Try to get people thinking about it, talking about it, and get some input. I mean, when, when you talked about increasing the refuse fee, the vehicle garbage fee, there was huge interest in that. And that's a pittance compared to, to these numbers. So I would think there would be considerable interest among the residents, so thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much.
So why don't we have, Terry, can you speak to the actual increase, if they adopted tonight, the difference in current as well as a quick little, if the council so chooses, bit about, you know, the full cost recovery and what that means?
So just as a point of clarification, the actual general fund subsidy that we identified in current fees lines up with the comments we just received, roughly $350,000, but that is not the proposed new increase in revenue. So fees are still proposed to recover less than the city's full cost of service. The actual incremental revenue, we would expect if the fees were adopted, is $164,000, because there's still partial cost recovery targeted. The other comment is associated with the idea of fully burdened costs and this concept of citywide overhead. The member of the community is correct, the fully burdened costs do include a share of citywide overhead, but it's an allocated share to each sort of division, and it's in line with our understanding of generally accepted financial principles for local governments when they give instructions for how to set user and regulatory fees and the costs that we want to layer into those fee-related services. They would say the costs are composed of direct services, the labor, the services and supplies, and a reasonable share of that allocation of citywide overhead. So the central service support that allows us to provide the direct services to the community. One other comment I will make is that these fees are set at the direction of the council. If for some reason you decide, I want to move forward with this, this procedure and adopt these fees, but let's say a couple months from now, something goes haywire and you say, this didn't have the intended effect. I'm watching what's happening, I'm monitoring what's going on, and I'm feeling like there's a ripple effect that I hadn't identified at the time of adoption. You can modify fees on a case-by-case basis, so you come back and say, I adopted 50 new fees, or just as recalibration of them, but two of them, staff has noticed something funny at the counter when we, when those projects actually come in the door. You could adjust those on a case-by-case basis.
And I have seen that happen on occasion, and have had to make adjustments.
And final point of comment, just in case it's helpful to you. Again, we did review several permit categories against the region to make sure that the recommended fees would not move you to an outlier, to the high end.
Okay, thank you very much. So I do not see any council members requesting to speak, is that? Okay, so I'll start on my right side. Councilmember Turner?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is the additional revenue, is that greater than 10% of our budget that we're at?
I promise this will be the next thing that's gonna go. The operating budget is 3.4?
Oh.
.1 million, 164,000 is a small fraction. And, and as we talked a little bit about at the previous meeting, what the city is doing is we're basically using general fund reserves, which could be used for, you know, street improvements or other things the council sees fit, to subsidize to a certain extent the cost of providing services to people who come to us for a particular permit or, or activity, you know, for generally around construction. So by raising it this amount, we will be reducing the amount of the general fund reserves and potentially freeing up that money to be used for something else, like street improvements.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wolshimer?
Thank you. I think I agree in general with the, with the principles here, that it's better to, to have the people who are requesting a service to pay for that service, rather than have it come out of the general fund. There are two items, and they're the same ones as last time, that I have a problem with. And then the first one is the solar. I would like to read, to keep that at zero. And the other one is the appeal fee. We're proposing a tripling of the appeal fee. We don't have a lot of appeals, so I don't think there's a big financial loss if we keep it the way it is. I think tripling it would put up a hurdle that would prevent people from appealing something, maybe. And I don't want to create the impression that we don't want to see appeals, so I propose to keep that where it is.
Okay, thank you. Just to kind of add on, you had given us the actual number of appeals, and I don't think we had had any in the last couple of years, is that correct?
Well, you know, we've had one since, just one, one since I've been here. We've had one, which would be about one in the last year.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Enstand?
Are these, excuse me, are the proposed fees, have they been baked into the proposed budget?
They have.
They have, so, okay.
But I would, I would say the appeal, because it was once a year, I don't even know that that really counts. And the solar is, I would say it's not of a magnitude that would really affect the budget revenue forecast, just a small fraction.
I was, I actually initially thought that the solar was a bit over the top, just because I think it's, we should encourage citizens to do it. But when I heard the testimony, or not the testimony, but the, the comments about the number of times it's necessary to go out and watch and observe, it seemed to me that that was not an exorbitant fee. But I would agree with Councilmember Wolshimer about, excuse me, about the not raising the appeal fee. And the other point that I would make is that I, you know, and the reason I asked about the budget was that I, I'm always mindful of the fact that we, the biggest, one of the big criticisms we get is that we're not transparent enough and that people don't get notice. And we did give notice, and I think no one from the public showed up last time when we talked about this, which is not uncommon. But, and I'm not surprised if more people show up about the garbage fees, because everybody comes, the garbage gets picked up every week, and that's a more, you know, user-applicable fee to all of us. So I can see why, that, that gets a lot more of, more attention than this might. But I wouldn't have a problem, other than the proposed budget, to put it off for another meeting, just to have, see if anybody else is interested in coming forward and talking about it, just to give citizens a fair shot at it. But that's just my, my two cents worth. Otherwise, I'm in favor of this with the, with going back to whatever the, the appeal fee was previously.
Where do you, where do you hit the?
Okay, let me go to Councilmember Rogers, and then we'll come back to you, Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, overall, I have no problem with this, because I just think people that are using the services should pay for the services. I almost think it should be more. That's just my own opinion. I think if I have people coming out to my house, I feel like I should pay for it. The one that I think should stay the same is that parcel map fee, because that is for someone that's putting in multiple units, and they're probably looking for some kind of a profit based on the property anyway, so I have no problem with that one. I'm, the solar, no fee, solar, I can, I can agree with that, and I, and the appeal fee at $360. I can also agree on that one. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I, I wanted to agree with Councilmember Enstanding here. I think it is prudent to get input, more input from the public. We should do an outreach and to communicate more with them, because that's been the number one criticism of the council, is that we don't pay attention to, to getting out to them and telling them what we're doing, although we do. So I would go with Councilmember Enstanding. I also have a problem with that regular, the fee of the master plan from $0 to $3,000. So I would like to see that reduced, considering that we only have, only had two last year. So the impact is not there, but when you look at it from $0 to $3,000, that's a lot.
Okay. Yes.
And one other question. I believe it was written in there that there's an automatic adjustment based on the all-urban consumer price index. And I was just wanting a little bit of an explanation, if that was a good gauge on, on what we're doing, or if we should be looking at another index, or having the study done on a more, you know, consistent basis compared to other cities, and what's reasonable?
Yeah, I can, I can chime in a little bit about that. So the idea of annual escalation, the, the primary feedback we get from the development community, so the other side of the table, when, when considering these fee studies, is not that they're opposed to paying full freight for these fees. It's that they prefer to, to not go long periods of time between adjustments. So they say, don't wait 20 years, and then raise my fees by 100%. I'd rather have some general pattern that I can assume. The CPI, our legal mandate is to not exceed the city's cost of service. Typically, city labor costs increase at a little bit faster than CPI, is what we've seen via recent history. So we use CPI to represent a conservative benchmark of assumed labor cost inflation. That primary driver of fees is labor, and so we believe that you should periodically complete studies like this, but not each year. It might be over-aggressive to do this full-blown study every year. Instead, you could do this every two to three years, or when the organization changes significantly. And then in the interim years, just do some sort of CPI adjustment. And we felt like the all-urban consumers is what we typically use for whatever region you're nearby. So Southern California, we would use the Southern California region here. The closest one was the San Francisco-Oakland Hayward.
Thank you. And I just wanted to speak a little bit to the public outreach and input. You know, just as the council did ask us, just as the council did ask us, you know, we did advertise this on Nextdoor and e-blast this out, I think almost immediately after the meeting, or a couple days following. And we re-sent that again at one point. So I do feel like, as staff and as the council has, you know, made a priority, we have done, you know, an extensive amount of public outreach. I, I would probably argue that one of the reasons why we may not have heard, we've heard actually only from one person this entire time, other than the gentleman who spoke tonight, I've not heard from anyone, is, you know, unlike the refuse vehicle impact fee, which is attached to your, everyone's garbage bill, every, every single person is affected by that, every household. And, you know, as a matter of course of action, I'm sure that brings out, you know, more folks' interest in it, because everyone's gonna be affected. With the big difference being here is that these, these fees are only assessed on individuals when they actually come to the city for a particular service. In this case, it's usually related to construction, building, planning, and engineering. So, you know, giving my best professional guess on, you know, why we have not received more questions or comments for the public, that would be my estimation.
Okay, so then I'll wrap it up if we don't have any other questions, and I'll call for a vote in a minute or so. So I also brought up the fact that I think we need to make sure that we have a lot of public input. And when we first came out with this agenda item, we actually put it out earlier than the Friday, because we wanted to make sure that people wouldn't say, oh, this showed up on a Friday, and you're hitting us with it on Tuesday, we didn't have any time to study it. So we actually put it out earlier, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yes, we did.
And at that meeting, we also then said that we wanted to make sure that we had at least two or three other notices. Now, I've personally seen a couple of notices on Nextdoor, and I've also seen the emails go out and specifically referencing the user fee. So I think we have done a pretty good amount of effort in terms of sending this information out. And, and as we mentioned earlier, if we do get a huge amount of blowback, this is always something that we can delay at a future meeting. But again, the fees that, that we're raising are not, I would say, exorbitant. I think we're only increasing, if you're building a house, I think we came up with a total of about $3,500, correct?
For a new single-family home.
That, okay. So I personally will support the fees, and I will support voting on them tonight. And the one, the one thing that I would also agree with is I agree that the, the appeal fee may be a little high. And again, since we're not getting a lot of those, it's probably a good idea to, to just not give the, give the appearance of trying to suppress people from being able to appeal a decision. So that, that one I can go for. I do agree with Councilmember Enstanding, after I had my solar system put up, and I know how many times Rob had to come to the house, and it's, and it's not just show up at the house and go, yeah, there's, there's solar panels up there, you know, he's gotta climb up on the roof, and they actually had to take the panels, well, not all of them, but they had to take a few of them apart. And then he looks underneath of them, and he checks the wiring, and he makes sure that the wires are attached to the box properly. He checks everything from the transformer, transformer all the way. And I think that's, that is a good amount of work to do. And when you're paying, I'd say the average cost of a solar panel system these days is probably about $20,000. And adding 150 to it, a lot of times you'll probably find a contractor that'll just eat that, because they want the business from you these days, because it's very, very competitive out there. And I don't think we're going to encourage anybody to get solar power, because we don't have any, any fee on that. And I don't even think a lot of people are going to notice it, so. The last, the last comment I had is I was looking through the master schedule of fees. I had a couple of questions about how we are actually calculating the base fees, and I, and I spoke with Terry about this a little bit earlier. And one of the things I would like to see us implement are, on the master fee schedule, when we do have items that say, based on valuation, we should talk about how that valuation is actually calculated, because there are standards, and we do have a ways of doing that. There is a standard calculation that the state of California puts out, and then based on regions, there are multipliers, so that when you show up and say, I want to put this extension on my house, it's going to be 1,000 square feet. When they go, well, we'll take 1,000 square feet and times $256, so your project is valued at that amount. Versus just saying, we're going to value your, your project, and then people show up and they say, well, how do you value my project? And then we have to explain this every single time. I think the more we can put on our, on our price sheet, it makes it a little bit better so that people are informed when they come in to talk to the folks at City Hall. And then they don't, they don't get this, this, you know, they're not trying to make decisions at the desk, which I think makes life tougher for everybody in general.
And we can certainly do that.
I, I think that would be a really good idea. And the other thing I noticed, when I was trying to look for the master price sheet on our website, I went to the building department first, and I said, well, no, it's not the building department. Then I went to the engineering department, it wasn't any engineering department. I finally found it under the finance department. And we should probably maybe put it in multiple places. And then the last comment I had, I actually have two more comments. I think we should make it a little bit nicer, not just stick the resolution that we made back in 2011. We should have a really nice-looking price sheet. I was looking at our, at our competitors, Campbell and Los Gatos, and Campbell actually puts out a really nice price list. And, you know, ours looks like it's scanned, and it's kind of skewed a little bit, and, and the.
It probably is.
The formatting's a little bit scrunched on the right-hand side, and, you know, it just, it just doesn't look as nice as our website is looking these days.
I, I think we were gonna use what we provided in the packet, which is the materials that the consultant put together.
That was looking very nice.
Yeah, so we can certainly.
I would greatly encourage that.
We can add all of the schedules to all the different groups, building, planning, and engineering, and certainly add the information about valuation as well.
And then my last comment is, Los Gatos has a house-moving fee, and we don't. I think we should have one.
That's one we didn't study, unfortunately.
They actually have one, a fee to move your house. Because I've actually seen houses moved in Los Gatos, apparently.
You know, that's an, that's an excellent comment. Your fee schedule does not have a house-moving fee. You're right, the proposed fee schedule doesn't have one, and we didn't study it. But what we did do is put a section in the fee schedule that says, if you come to the city and you're requesting a service that is typically a fee-related service, but we just haven't identified it here, we will work with you as the applicant at these hourly rates to come up with a reasonable fee for these services. So for the circumstances that may occur once every 20 years, something like that, you don't have to do every possible nuance of the fee. Instead, you say. Instead, you say, we can use this hourly rate and come up with something reasonable.
Which is a great idea. Their fee schedule was 21 pages long. So it definitely got to be a little bit a...
Moving fee.
House-moving fee. They do have one. So at this point, I will look at my little board here and see if any motions pop up.
Can I ask a real quick question? What are we voting on in terms of the three things that we haven't made a decision on?
That's what we need a motion for. So when you make your motion, you could say, I wish to approve the fee. I wish to approve the fee with the changes brought forth by Councilmember Wolshimer or Councilmember Ann Standing. So we have Councilmember Wolshimer, and you're going to make a motion now.
My motion is to approve the fees, with the exception of the appeal fee. I keep that the way it is.
The which fee?
Okay, the appeal fee.
Just one clarification. So it would actually be, you would approve resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Monta Serrino adopting an updated schedule of user and regulatory fees, with the exception of the appeal fee.
That's what I said, wasn't it?
Yes, that is what you said.
All right. And we have a second on that. So at this point, can we have a vote, please? Oh, look at those buttons. Come on. Yes.
It's working itself.
I'm feeling better already.
All right. The votes are in, and we have a four-to-one vote. So thank you very much. All right. You're going to make Andrea jealous here. Okay, next, we have item number six, which is 17281 Xena Avenue with a variance request. So we will start with, I think Jeannie's going to take the point on this one, aren't you?
Yep.
All right.
I've got enough of these. Okay. Sorry. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's my pleasure again to be before you this evening to present to you an application requesting a variance to the development standards applicant to the property that's located at 17281 Xena Avenue. As presented in the report, the property owner has requested to vary from the required side and rear setback, as well as the building separation requirements, all related to the construction of an accessory dwelling unit. He proposes to, or the property owner's proposed to construct an accessory dwelling unit in the, it's the northwest corner of the property, situated between the main house and the existing pool. This space is somewhat constrained because, again, it's between the main house and the pool, which is why he's requesting to encroach into the required side and rear setbacks, which typically would be six feet. He's requesting to encroach one foot into each of those setbacks, as well as to encroach into the required building separation of any building to the waterline of a pool, which typically is six feet. Again, requesting a one-foot encroachment into that. He's requesting to do this so that he can construct an accessory dwelling unit that's 10 feet wide. If he didn't get these encroachments, he could construct an accessory dwelling unit, which is seven feet wide, which would meet the minimum requirements of the building code for a sleeping rooms and a habitable building. As I did state in the staff report, the property is a regular shape, similar to many in the neighborhood. It's approximately 10,000 square feet, so a pretty large lot. There are other opportunities on the site to place an accessory dwelling unit in the rear yard. He can place the same size and still have sufficient rear yard area. He could potentially even make it larger. There's also other opportunities within the primary structure's building envelope should one decide to attach an accessory dwelling unit. And it's, I guess, in my staff report, I just wanted to point out that there are additional opportunities, primarily because it's a regular-shaped lot. There's no large trees or any other sort of, you know, natural resources constraining the use of this property for the type of construction that they're looking for. So given all of that, staff is recommending that the City Council deny the requested variance on the grounds that there really are no special circumstances related to this property, and that the required findings cannot be made. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Ann Standing.
Good evening, Jeannie. Thanks for the report. And I really, I don't know if it was a, how we got the aerial photo of the property, but it was frankly very helpful to get that into the report. When you say one-foot encroachment, you're not saying that the setback would be one foot. You're saying instead of six, it would be five?
Encroaching one foot into the required six-foot setback, so down to five feet.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that part. And that was all.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, at this point, would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation?
I brought some, I think you'll see in the packet that Jeannie prepared, there's some letters of support from my neighbors, and I have since gathered more. I have them, if you're allowed to receive them, I can hand them out. Okay, great. There should be six copies. I probably should have made more, but hopefully people can share. There's six packets of multiple letters of support. And some of my neighbors are here. I thank them for being here with us. So I'm just going to keep this simple. You have the letter and the letters of support, the rationale as we see it for requesting this variance. So I just want to read a statement to just kind of re-anchor our point of view for you. So we're the Spencer family. We moved to our home on Xena Avenue almost seven years ago. We have four children, one at Dave's, one at Fisher, one at Los Gatos Parent Nursery School, and a two-year-old on the rise who will follow in their steps. You know, as I said, I'm sure you've read all of the material, and I know that some of you have visited our home to see the space firsthand, to appreciate what we're trying to do and why. But if I may, I'd like to just state for the record and for those in attendance, if there's any, you know, I think there's some folks from the community here, so they can kind of hear our rationale. So why an ADU? So we want to build this accessory dwelling unit because our parents are recently retired. They're all living in Texas, which is where we're from. We want to build an ADU to provide them with a comfortable and private place to stay for longer periods of time. We will only consider detached structure. The staff report, as Jeannie pointed out, contends that we can add space to our second story. We would never do that. It's cost prohibitive. It would hurt the look and feel of our home, and it doesn't accomplish our need for a truly separate and detached space for our visiting parents. So where to put the ADU? This is critical. So I want you to, maybe if I don't speak too quickly, you can capture all this. So in our opinion, the west side, the northwest side, as Jeannie pointed out, which is the constrained part of the yard, is the only option. The west side has a row of trees that are over 20 feet tall, limiting the view of the ADU to our neighbors. The east side doesn't have any trees to hide the ADU. The west side does not receive much sun and is therefore kind of a rarely-used space by us and by our previous owners, as you could probably tell by what was going on over there. The west side also provides the most direct route to the driveway. The east side would require installing more hardscape to create a pathway. If we did build on the east side of our yard, and this is a critical part, it would negatively impact our neighbor to the east, who's here tonight. And this is because the neighbor to his rear has a very large ADU sitting on the property line with zero setback. It is literally on the fence. It touches the fence, and it's very wide. And if you're in his yard, you see a roof sloping into his yard. It's somehow grandfathered in, but moreover, our property is at an elevation about three feet higher than his. And so an ADU, even with a six-foot setback on this larger part of our yard, would be quite an imposing structure and would negatively impact his backyard experience. He said so in his letters. He's here tonight, if you have questions for him. And we aspire to maintain a good relationship with our neighbor and our friend on the east side. So in our opinion, these are special circumstances attributable to our and his yard that justify this minor variance. So if we think about special circumstances, that's how we see the rationale for the west side of the yard. But why a variance? As Jeannie pointed out, the space is very narrow due to the pool that the previous owner installed 20 years ago, just as in a fight. We don't want a pool. We just have a pool. They're expensive to fill in. We have kids. We actually prefer to not have one. But, so it limits our space. As she pointed out, the space, the maximum we could build is seven-feet interior, which is, in our opinion, quite an uncomfortable living space, and building code would agree since seven feet is literally the smallest a room can be. So we also run the risk of not even getting to seven feet somehow. If we can increase the width of the room to nine feet, which is still very small, it would be much more livable. And this is accomplished by the one-foot variance on this side and the one-foot variance on that side. Hence our request, six instead of five. As a note, San Jose setbacks are five. I'm not saying we should become San Jose. I'm just pointing that out. So what do members of our community think? We polled our immediate neighbors, all of them, all the adjacent ones. They're all very supportive, as you saw in the letters, including, most importantly, those that would actually share fences with where the ADU will be. And, you know, provided more letters that hopefully serve as additional evidence, you know, that your constituents support applying good judgment to requests for small exceptions, even when it impacts them. So just to close, you know, I think we hope that this provides sufficient evidence the council needs to approve this request. And with an approval, we'll immediately start construction. Without it, we won't. And we also hope that our ADU and others, you know, that the city approves, you know, help the City of Monta Serrino show the state that we're doing everything we can to help with the housing shortage. So that's all we had to say tonight. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for me?
If you could hold on for a second. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll bring it back to council. And were there any follow-ups the staff would like to make?
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak?
Yeah, okay. At this point, I want to open it up to the public.
My name's TJ Boar. I live at 17269 Xena. I'm the one with the obtrusive dwelling right behind my fence. You have a picture of it? You see? I put, how lovely is that, on the fence? That's what I look at every day. I go out in my nice backyard, and that's what I see. And it's grandfathered in. It's right on the property line. That is a 10-foot fence that we had erected, and fences are not cheap that high, tend to fall down a lot faster. That's not good. So I live with that. And my good friend Ken and his wife Megan, I'm really good friends with these people. I just think that a structure just to the left is kind of unfair to me, to my property value, right? This is going to be an extremely high unit because of the elevation change. And now I'm looking at a 14-foot fence to actually cover this dwelling on the left. So I think that's a little unfair for me. I like Ken, I like his family, and I think a one-foot variance, what he's asking for, is a small price to pay for the community feel that we have. I mean, I think it really deters from the ruralness, why I moved here in 1993, of kind of spread-out houses and kind of that park feeling and nice rural feel. I think this deters from that having two structures right in my backyard.
Okay, I hope you grant his variance. Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else wishing to speak on this agenda item? Hello?
No.
I'm Philippa Alves, and it's none of my business what they do over on Xena, and I'm not here to pro or con, but just to remind the council that you encourage people to build secondary or auxiliary units. This is one of the things that has come up in the past, and it had been a problem for a while, and it looked like it was being resolved. But this seems to be a very minor request, and although staff recommends denial, there doesn't really seem to be much reason for denying these people a request for a secondary unit. This is something you would ask the community to do in the past, recently. They're only asking for a foot here or a foot there. It would be hard to realize that this has to be denied for any good reason, especially, again, since you, the council, have asked people in the community to build secondary units.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no more speaker cards, I'll bring it back to council. And would anybody like to buzz in with a question? Or just raise your hand, because I'm actually looking at a map of the property right now. So I don't see these.
I just have...
It looks like you want to say something.
Yeah, I always do, you know me. But I don't talk too long. That's the good part about this. You know, I just think, my own opinion is, I think the Spencers have done everything correct, you know, with the neighbors and, you know, and also getting all these letters. And we also need the ADU, ADU units, the AD units. So I just wanted to say that I'm personally in favor of voting yes for them to have this variance.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Ann Standing?
Yeah, I visited the property some time ago, and I likewise think that the encourage, you know, the various things we've done to encourage people to build accessory dwelling units is important in this regard. But that doesn't necessarily, you know, justify a variance. We've got some specific government code provisions we have to comply with. And I, you know, and when you read the terms, I, you know, which I greatly respect because they've been in existence for a long time, you know, I think they can be read in a way that, in my view, allows us to pass a variance in this situation because of purely, not merely, but it's one, it's not only just that it's one foot, because that argument can be raised in all types of different circumstances. But if you look at, you know, this particular property, which is admittedly a square or rectangle, however you might describe it, which doesn't typically fit what our ordinance talks about in terms of its shape or topography, because it's relatively flat. But the way the property was developed when they purchased it, it leaves them with really, you know, one specific spot, which otherwise doesn't encroach upon the rest of the neighbors who've otherwise consented to it. So it seems to me that it does fall within, our request would fall within the variance section of our ordinance 10.10.020. So for those reasons, I would be in favor of this also.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wolshimer?
Thank you. Before serving on the council, I served on the Site and Architecture Commission for five years. And one of the things I always liked to say until people were tired of it, probably, was that if it was just a matter of interpreting the rules, yes or no, it could be done by a computer. I think we have to look at every situation. I did visit the property, and I agree with the previous two speakers that we should allow the variance in this case.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
No comments, please.
Okay, thank you. And I'm also in support of this. As one of our speakers said, we are really encouraging our neighbors to build housing. We desperately need housing in the Bay Area. This particular housing is going to be used for a good purpose, after talking to the owner. And again, I understand the, well, it's only one foot. But I think in this case, this is one foot that's going to be put to really, really good use. I'll say that I stayed in a hotel in Japan once, and the walls were seven feet apart from each other. And the first day was novel. The next day was, the guy who I was with, he about went crazy. And he's only five foot seven. So yes, I think a nine-foot room is a lot better. And so I'm also in support of this. So I'm going to look to our city council, who has to really help us on these kind of things. And she's going to tell us what we did wrong in our justifications.
So let me just say that the basis for staff's recommendation was that variances are very rarely granted. And it's actually, although it's in our Minnesota code, it's actually in state law. That's our variance requirements are based on state law. So in looking at the strict interpretation of those sections, staff believes that there was nothing unique about the property. That's the standard, is what is unique about the property that justifies this variance. And I think it's important to note that it's one foot here, it could be one foot setback here, it could be one foot in height somewhere else. here, it could be one foot in height somewhere else. So we need to be very careful when we're looking at this, that it, there is something unique about this particular piece of land that would justify it. Because next week, you may get their neighbor that comes in and wants their single-family home to be one foot closer. Or another neighbor may move in and not be happy with the way that it's designed. So, I would say that based on the testimony that we've heard today, you could, in making those findings, determine that the special circumstances exist based on the current configuration of the property and the existence of the significant trees in that, whatever side that is, the opposite side of where it would go. But I would caution you that in, historically, in this city and cities throughout the state, it is something unique about the, the land itself, not the improvements that are constructed there. Perhaps it's, it's the slope, or the narrowness, or something based on the features of the land, not the development that is put there.
Thank you. Councilmember standing?
I didn't get to speak. I, you know, I, I understand and appreciate what council has advised us. And I really meant my comments sincerely when I thanked, you know, Ms. Hamilton for the wonderful job that she's done and has done. And I understand the rationale that she came to based upon, you know, trying to, to do her job, which is protecting us from, you know, turning these kinds of situations into a further calamity in future, you know, in future considerations. But it seems to me that based upon, that, you know, that there are special circumstances here with respect to the configuration of the property, and it is, you know, mostly shielded on the west side of the property by the trees. And moving it, if they did opt to move it to the east side of the property, we'd probably get a significant complaint from the neighbor who tonight spoke about the fact that it's great where it is, if they're going to do one. So it seems to me that, that there's, there's a basis for this. And I, and I think that every time we get one of these requests, which have happened very many over the years, we've always looked to the uniqueness of the particular property. And normally, it's an odd-shaped property with particular, you know, slope, et cetera. This one, you know, is not unique in to the, to the sense that it's pretty much a square or a rectangle. But I think the way it's configured, you know, warrants the granting of the variance. So I would so move that we, the city council, pass an ordinance, or, or grant the application of the applicants to grant a variance of one foot, one foot for the, the two sides that need to be, need to be modified.
Okay, so...
Before we go on, I, the, shall we, well, before, before the, my suggestion would be, and this has been being in planning for many years, you know, given the circumstances that you see as, you know, meeting the variance standards, I would argue that there are now potentially hundreds of lots in the city that we could use the same argument for. So what I would request, that if the council so chooses to grant this variance, that we officially move forward with changes to our ordinance. So that instead of, it's six feet currently...
Make it five.
Make it five feet.
And I would recommend not changing the building separation, because that's really from a safety standpoint. Stepping out of a building and only having five feet to the waterline of a pool can begin to be a safety issue. But if, if the council feels like five feet is sufficient, is a sufficient setback from an adjacent property in the R-18 district, then that is the appropriate step to take. And therefore, everybody with the regular-shaped properties or the rectilinear properties can do the same. And just, again, to remind the council, every one of these surrounding properties who meets a setback doesn't come before site and architecture, or anybody for a decision on the location of that ADU. It is strictly through a building permit. So, the ADU can go where he's proposing it, should he be granted a variance, or we change the setbacks. This property owner, or a subsequent property owner, could put an accessory structure on the east side of the property, 120 square feet. Or should this ADU not go through, somebody else could put an ADU on the east side, meet the setbacks, and not come in for any discretionary approval. So just, again, to make you aware of what the potential actions that could happen on this property that, and also to make the, the neighbors aware that granting this doesn't necessarily protect them from a 14-foot-tall, 120-square-foot accessory building on the other side of the property.
And part of the reason why I would recommend we, you direct us to move forward with change to the ordinance is because, otherwise, you know, as, as some members of the audience have stated, and the council is fully aware of and supports, we want as many accessory dwelling units built as possible. So, similar situation, they can't, you know, don't meet the six-foot setback, they're going to have to go through the variance process. So there's the cost of the variance, there's the time. So the idea is, these are, if, should be able to, you know, meet the city's requirements, and they only require building permits. So, I, I would strongly encourage the council, if they, if you so choose to grant the variance, that you direct us to also make changes to our ordinance.
Would, would that need to be a part of the motion?
I mean, you could just direct staff, not as part of that motion, but separate, just direct staff to research potential changes. And, and it may be, we're just talking about secondary dwelling units, not main structures. There's a lot of ways that we could look at it, but I think the concern is, tonight, granting a variance in this case could, as they say, open the floodgates. And I don't think we want to be dealing with, a variance is an exception, not the rule. So...
Okay.
One other point, sorry.
Except with our new fee structure, variances are...
That's true, they're not, they're not cheap. We don't have a resolution for you tonight, so we would just ask in the motion that you direct staff to prepare the resolution, and we'll put it on the consent calendar for the next meeting.
Okay.
Not to, it's a deny, it's an approval. I mean, denial. Yeah.
Okay. So, councilmember standing, do you understand that we're just asking for a motion to, for a, we're asking for what to be prepared for the consent calendar?
The resolution, granting the variance.
Right, so we're making a motion to grant a, to create a resolution that will be on the consent calendar at our next meeting.
So I would say, if the maker of the motion would be comfortable with this, I would recommend that the motion be, the, the city council would approve the variance for the setbacks as outlined in the staff report, based on the special circumstances on the property, which consist of the property development patterns and the potential for screening of the structure in its current location. And direct staff to prepare a resolution based on those findings, and bring it back at our next council meeting.
Is that okay with the maker?
I was just about to say that, so.
Excellent. And for councilmember Willsheimer? You, you still, okay. Thank you. So then at this time, our voting buttons will appear.
If we get lucky.
Here we go, rolling.
Oh my gosh.
Wow.
Yay, it worked.
Amazing. It worked.
We're like, four for four tonight. Okay, well, congratulations, and we look forward to a very beautiful structure appearing in the near future on your property. Okay, so that brings us to new business, item number seven. And we're going to discuss the fiscal 2018, 2019 operating and capital budget. And Sue, this is your time to shine.
We're actually going to...
All right.
First, I'm going to apologize, I am, I unfortunately have been very sick. And I made it to the doctor today and got some antibiotics, so I'm on the mend. But I've noticed the more I talk, the worse I get.
I just wanted to get a glass of water.
Oh, of course. So, if you, I may slow and stop a minute, get some water, so please bear with me. So, tonight, as we indicated at the goal-setting session, which occurred a couple of months ago now, I believe, we would be coming to the city council for a workshop to discuss the proposed fiscal year 2018, 2019 operating and capital budget with you. We have, Sue has done, and our finance officer has done an awesome job of helping me with something. I've not really done quite at this, I wouldn't say level, because I've worked on budgets much larger, but not with all the various moving pieces that are part of an entire city budget. And she has been extremely helpful. And she worked to put together the revenue forecast, and the expenses forecast, and the general fund reserve information. She helped compile all that into a document, which was attached to the staff report. And so tonight, we're going to walk you through that and get your feedback. And based on your direction tonight, we will then move forward with compiling a final draft of next year's operating and capital improvement budget, and we'll bring that back to you in June for your adoption. So that is our mission for tonight. So basically, I'm just going to, this basically, the presentation mirrors the staff report. The only addition really is the information that comes from the Better Streets Commission, which met last Thursday to talk about some of the things related to pavement management program, scope, and funding options, which, which you guys asked me to do. So, so with that, let's just start at the very beginning. And Sue will chime in where I make a mistake or have some extra information. Overall, we're anticipating revenues are expected to rise about 4%. The budget does include, in terms of staffing, staffing salaries, 3% cost-of-living adjustment to the schedules themselves. Within the schedules, there are steps, and individual employees can only move up in individual steps at the discretion of the city manager, and it's based on performance. And I do, I will be performing, compiling the performance reviews probably in late June or early July. It also includes carryover of funds that are allotted to the fiscal year 2017, 2018 pavement management program, Blanchard Drive Pilot Improvement Project. And, and this is necessary because, as you know from tonight's agenda, which you approved on the consent calendar, we are awarding the contract for the pavement management program, which includes the 16 street segments that we're working on repaving. And as is also noted in the report, we are re-issuing the bid package for Blanchard. It went out yesterday, there's a three-week window. So we hopefully, three weeks from yesterday, will be getting some better numbers for Blanchard, and we can award that bid shortly thereafter. But the reality is, while we are awarding the bids and will get the work started before the end of this fiscal year, the majority of the invoices that we will receive from the contractors, you know, and, you know, and to pay the bills for the actual project will not come until next fiscal year. So that is the reason why we, we need to carry over those amounts, we're not actually going to use this year into next year. And as Sue and I, Sue and I chatted, I know this is not something that is, you know, been typical for the city council, but it is extremely common with municipal organizations, and particularly when it comes to capital improvement projects, because most of them are, many of them are street-related. And, you know, of course, the construction street season is during the middle of the, the year, which happens to be right when the fiscal year changes. So, overall, the city is in excellent financial shape. Between our auditor's report, which you received a presentation on recently, and the information you'll see in our documents, we are, we are really in good shape. So, the specifics in terms of some of the anticipated expenditures, the first group we want to highlight are the requests from the community-based organizations, which you heard from, excuse me, which you heard from the top four that are listed here on this slide on the chart at the previous meeting. We also received a written request from the senior transportation pilot program, the ride program, which you authorized last year for, to join in on the pilot program. Request again, you can see on the left the amount that was granted in the current budget, and the amount on the right, which represents their request. For the ride program, they are requesting the same amount as, as last year. And I, you know, I would encourage you, if, if at any time you have some questions, because it's, I'm going to go through quite a bit, you can certainly ask me as we go along, because this is a, a workshop format, and I want to be sure that you, absolutely, yes.
In that case, on the previous foil, I was a little bit surprised by the last issue, the, the last item. What, what does that provide? What, what does it actually give to seniors?
The right, well, actually, the mayor and I were actually at a really good presentation a couple mayors and managers' meetings ago, from the two organizations that are sponsoring the program. The ride program is the, is the program that we agreed to join in with Campbell and Los Gatos, and Saratoga, and ourselves, I think it was just the four. Oh, Cupertino.
Cupertino.
Does include Cupertino. And it is a program which is providing rides to seniors for medical purposes, it actually could be for any purpose, social purposes, grocery shopping. They, there's a call-in numbers that they use, and they set it up. It does provide a subsidy based on income. So, you know, depending on your income level, it can be considerably less than, say, an Uber ride. And it also, just one second, one last thing, it also is helping to meet a, a population which in some cases is not necessarily hooked into technology. And the mayor, please chime in.
Okay, so, the, the other thing I wanted to add is that VTA, in their new plan, is actually going to start winding down things like the VTA cars that will go out and pick people up. And this project was put together by council, I'm sorry, by supervisors Wasserman and Semidion. And this is, this is the trial project that they're running. And we've now come up on our first year, and we're now looking to extend it into a second year. And the, the program has had mixed results. One of the things that they would like to see is a little bit more fare recovery, to get it to more of an Uber level. Right now, what we are finding, though, is that we're really having to subsidize a number of riders, just because of the income levels that we're dealing with right now. And, and again, it's, it's more than what, what VTA would do in terms of taking you to a, a medical center. This is, you want to go to Safeway, you want to go get your hair cut, you want to go to the YMCA, you want to go to the pool and, and take, you know, and take Aqua lessons and, you know, and, and to really just help, help the senior population feel mobile. And, because right now, a lot of people are, are not able to drive, and the volunteer programs that have been in existence in the past have really started to dry up, and there really is, it's really getting harder for a number of seniors to get around. So, councilmember Turner?
Yeah, is this $8,000 allocated for Monteserino residents, or does this go into a pot?
This goes into a pot. So it's based on population, and I don't know, Terry, were you going to go in any further what, what the other cities are, are doing, or...
You know, I don't have that information handy, but it is proportional. So it's based on population. So of course, our contribution is, is quite small.
Oh, is that a...
Yeah. So I think, like, Saratoga is putting in $30,000 or something like that.
And I, and from the presentation, they do feel it's, it's fairly successful, but it's only been running, it's been less than a year.
It's been less than a year.
So I, I think that they would really like the opportunity to continue for another year as a... to continue for another year as a pilot, to make some adjustments, you know, to try to get a little bit more recovery off the subsidy, and to see if they can continue to expand. And speaking from staff's perspective and talking with them, I think it is a very worthwhile project that is providing a service, and hence the reason why we're recommending it for approval, or recommending it to be added to the budget.
Good.
Thank you. Yes.
Just saying real quick while you're on that page.
Yes.
I, the one, the only one that bothered me was the music and arts. I thought that was a disproportionate amount compared to the other ones that we're giving money to. And I personally would like to see that at the same level as it was last year. The $10,000. It just seems like $10,000 to them and $3,000 to the art, you know, persons. That's my own personal opinion on that one.
Okay. Now that I'm thinking about how we go through this, I think it's probably best, in addition to the questions, that we might address each piece as we go through it, because that would be easier than going back. Does that seem like that works for everyone?
I think so.
Yeah. I mean, I'm only highlighting the biggest points. Much of the budget is very standard paperclips and paper and lights and water. So, but beyond that. So what I, so maybe that's a good time to ask here. The mayor is suggesting that the Los Gatos music and arts should be similar to what it would be, was last year. Last year. Oh, I'm.
You just made me mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, thanks.
It's yours, man.
I got a promotion.
It's, it's coming up.
Got more pay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I told you I was ill.
And we look so much alike.
Yes, you do. The vice mayor's recommending that it be the same as last year, $5,000.
I'm still not the vice mayor.
I'm sorry.
I'm just a lonely council guy.
I'm sorry. I thought the mayor had actually said they'd keep it the same. I was looking down, trying to find something else. The councilperson, a councilperson recommended that it be $5,000. With that, it would make them all, with the exception of the morning rotary, which is, wasn't granted any last year. I'm not sure if that's because they didn't ask. Sue, do you remember?
I don't think they asked last year.
They didn't, but they're moving, so they had a legitimate reason for asking.
Okay. So they would be new. I didn't want you to make to think that you said no last year. So with that, I would ask, if there aren't any additional questions, would the council, there's their consensus of the council to move forward with the requested amount, with the exception of Los Gatos Music and Arts, would be at $5,000?
So I guess my question there would be, in the past, we did $10,000, and then last year, we did $5,000. And I don't remember why. Were we mad at them, or they didn't ask for more, or?
I wish Andrea was here, because there was another one, not music and arts, but it was music in the park.
Music in the park.
And Los Gatos has taken over hosting that. So they're not asking for money this year.
Right.
Los Gatos is funding that whole thing.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say that, which is why I thought the $10,000 was okay, because it's still the total amount of what we spent on music. The one that bothers me, frankly, is the senior transportation program. And it's not spending the money, it's the VTA, which is so wasteful. I mean, I've never seen an organization waste more money than VTA. You know, backing out and our cost goes up. It just seems to be, I mean, but that's not a reason why we should shortchange the program. But, but that, that's, I had to say that, so. So I'm in favor of all of those amounts for the next year. Any other questions about this, this particular page? I am also for the amounts, too.
So this is general consensus for as requested, then?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
That's okay.
I say general.
I like, I like that mayor thing.
Don't get used to it.
Hey, boys.
All right, let's move on to what is undoubtedly our biggest ticket item.
Yeah, it's passed.
The pavement management program and the Blanchard Drive Pilot Improvement Project. So as I noticed, I talked about the carryover funds that would need to be allocated in, that were allocated in fiscal, this fiscal year, need to be moved over. And in addition to that, in order for the city to remain on track for what the city council directed us to do from the pavement budget options report from 2017, we would need for this year to also transfer over $135,000 from the general fund reserve. So that way, we would have the coming fiscal year's pavement management program would be fully funded. Just to give you a little bit more information about the pavement management program and the fundings itself, there's a number of sources of funding, revenue that the city receives, which has to be used on street improvements. These are the traffic fines, $15,000, Measure B, sales tax, $65,000, gas tax, which for the moment includes SB 1 additional funds, $153,000, and our road impact fee, which is assessed on new construction, at $80,000. So all of those funds together must be used in some fashion for street improvements, and we're, we have on track to do, to do that. But in order for us to do what, what the city council directed us to do, we would need an additional $135,000. Now, I want to talk a little bit about, because this is kind of leading up to some other parts of the workshop. This is a chart, which you've seen before, that shows the pavement management program budget for all the fiscal years from 2017 through 2021, which is a five-year program. And we're now in one. And two is the one that's coming up, hence the, the why it's a bit over 448. But as you'll notice, when we actually get to the following fiscal year, not the one that's coming up, but the one after, as well as the two beyond that, we estimate that currently, between the traffic fines, Measure B, sales tax, gas tax, and the road impact fee, we will actually receive enough funding to pay for the pavement management program for the final three years. So with that, our estimate is, for the last three years, there will be no additional general fund reserve transfers needed to cover the pavement management program.
That's good.
If you get a little lost, now just y'all holler at me.
No, we already did this.
So this kind of leads me into the next part, where we're going to talk about the potential for doing additional street improvement projects beyond what was anticipated in the, in the pavement management program. So I've talked with you guys through various methods of communication about, you know, the possibility of doing a Blanchard-like street. And when I say Blanchard-like, I mean length of the street, typical improvements that are going to be required for it, for the frontage improvements, but just the general, just a street that is generally similar to Blanchard. And so you'll see in this budget, we are recommending transferring $500,000 from the general fund reserve, so that we could fund another Blanchard project for next year. And we're also recommending, which you don't have to approve tonight, because we're only talking about the following fiscal year, but to get your feel for considering doing the same in the future for the next three years. Now, I worked with Jim Helmer, who's just been awesome with all of this, because before I got here, I knew zero about any of this. But with his estimation of us doing that, you know, currently, our pavement management program is anticipating increasing our pavement condition index from 63 fair to 70 good. If we added in another Blanchard every year, we would raise it up to maybe 74, 75. And this is actually quite good, as in comparison to other communities in the area. It's not great, but it is good.
Here, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Are you saying, consider doing the same in future years, 500,000 every year?
Yeah, well, at least through the next, for this coming budget, as well as the next three. And if we did that, we estimate, we'd raise the city's overall pavement condition index between 74 and 75.
Um, 60, 60-something, right?
63, we're at 63. And maybe a little bit less, because we haven't gotten to this year's projects. So Sue worked up a graph, just to give you some general idea of the change in the reserve balance. And what you can see is, I think I can do this, can I? Can you see it? Yes. So for 1718 to 1819, given our recommendations, it would move the reserve fund balance from about 4.8 million to 3.65, which includes, Sue, Sue, can you go over that just?
Includes that Blanchard, a Blanchard-like project of 500,000, plus continuing with the pavement management for the next five years.
And so with that, then you can see, if we kept doing the 500,000, the next one would drop to, we estimate, about 3.35. Then the next year would be about 3.3. But then you will see that, based on our estimates of the revenue, you know, which keeps increasing through property taxes, which is our largest source of revenue, even, even putting forth 500,000 towards a Blanchard a year, you can see that overall would not, you know, would show a dip, but it would actually start to increase again. So I just want to, the reason why I'm showing you this is just to give you some idea of what we're proposing, how that would affect future operating budgets and the reserves.
Question.
Yes.
Are there, are there three other Blanchard-like projects in the city?
I think there's like 12. We, yeah, maybe 13. Yeah, there's a lot. And, and, and just to repeat a bit about that, because I think it's an important point, which we, you know, talked to the council about, and for anyone who's listening, or anyone in the audience. Overall, it's better to do these streets that are like Blanchard now, do the frontage improvements, improve the bed of the street, because at the amount of money that it costs, because it will last longer overall than if we wait just a few years and the street fails. And then we have to completely dig it up and replace it in its entirety. So when you look over the long term, you know, 10, 15, maybe even 20 years, the city is saving money in the long run by doing these types of improvements, like we're doing on Blanchard, and not waiting for those streets to fail, and then completely rebuild them.
Got nine, nine more besides these three.
Yes, I mean, you know, if the council so wished to be, Sue, very ambitious, you know, they certainly could direct staff to allocate even more to do additional Blanchard-like streets. But we, we thought we would start a little small with our discussion with you.
I had asked questions, and I really appreciate the outreach from, from both Sue and Terry with respect to talking about this before the meeting tonight with council members independently. And I was concerned about this dip in the reserves, because we obviously have been holding really high numbers in the past. I think some of that has been somewhat inflated by the fact that we haven't done the kinds of things that we were supposed to do.
Correct.
So frankly, after talking, talking it through, I was very comfortable with the idea that we would be engaged in this type of a program going forward, so I endorse it.
So I wanted to provide you this background, because this is part of what I would like to get some consensus on tonight, is some potential changes to the city's current fiscal policy. Because when we bring the budget back for adoption, I do want to bring in a, if, if the council so chooses, I want to bring back an updated fiscal policy. So currently, our fiscal policy states that the, the city shall have in reserves between 200% and 600% of its operating budget, which we currently, we currently are in compliance with that. But we would not be with the, with the coming fiscal year budget. As, as was directed by the council, we did reach out to the Better Streets Commission, who met last Thursday. Actually, it was the longest meeting I've had since I've been here. We were here till, over 10, after 10 o'clock. But we had a really great discussion with them. The most important point regarding the city's current fiscal policy and funding for potential expansion of the pavement management program revolved around the city's reserve policy. And they, in a consensus, recommended reducing it from the current minimum of 200 to a newer, lower minimum of 100. But they were, they were very clear that if the council was going to do that, they wanted that money spent on streets, street improvement projects. So again, as.
If I may, I'm a little bit surprised that the Better Streets Commission is involved in recommending changes to the fiscal reserve policy of the city.
Well, maybe I should give you the broader context. I did, I did provide a link to their staff report. I, if you didn't get a chance to look at it, then you wouldn't have seen that. This is only one small piece. So the broader context of the discussion with the Better Streets Commission was because the council did direct me to take to them the idea of expanding the scope, as well as some potential funding options. So one of those was the vehicle refuse, the refuse vehicle impact fee. So we did talk to them about that. But, you know, we also, you know, I felt like I received enough, you know, direction and consensus that we were looking for their feedback. So in addition to that, we also brought them a couple other options. Bonding, we talked about. There's a program the state has, I can't remember the name of it. Jim knows these much better than I do. There's a program the state has where you can borrow against future revenues you receive for street improvements. We, I'm trying to think if we asked them any other. Oh, we even queried them on if the council were to update the user and regulatory fee studies, you know, which we were receiving some general funds, would they also recommend, you know, that the, that the council put that money towards streets as well? So the idea was, you know, they're the body that's providing us some citizen advisory. So it seemed, you know, reasonable to package this in with all of that.
I understand. It certainly explains the length of the meeting.
Well, no, we also met with the school, which I was going to talk about at the end of the meeting. We met with Dave's Avenue Elementary. The principal came, and the Saferest School Coordinator came, and we had a very, fairly lengthy discussion about a number of things related to that. So it wasn't just this. Any other questions on that, or comments? So just as, I provided this information before, but we'll just, I just want to reiterate it. So the city's pro-fiscal policy, this is a list of other communities in the area, and what their policy is in terms of general fund reserves and ratio to operating budget. Los Gatos is at 25%. Saratoga is currently at 20%, Campbell at 10%. Mountain View is between 20 and 25. We, I, I did, actually, I believe, the city attorney reached out on behalf of us to a consulting firm, highly reputable, and they replied back that the Government Finance Officers Association, which apparently is the gold standard of the group in terms of government and finance, they have an overall recommendation of 17%. And the idea, especially with as low as 17%, those really is for, only for communities where their revenue stream is generally very stable. And, you know, so if your community has lots of sales tax revenue or transit occupancy tax revenue from hotels, you know, they might not necessarily recommend it be so low. And I'm only providing these for context, just so you have some idea within the realm of what other communities are doing. So before I go on, any particular questions or comments? Because I wanted to make one more comment about the fiscal policy, if the council so chooses to update it.
Well, I had one comment.
Yes.
And that is, since I've been on the council, we have experienced probably three of the greatest financial collapses in the history of the United States, between 2008 until the rebound just a couple of years ago. And throughout that entire period, our budget had the ability to stay pretty steady throughout that time. Again, as you said, we don't depend on sales taxes. We don't depend on transient tax. Our revenues are pretty much in line with our expenditures every single year. And we've looked at the, at the fiscal policy a number of times, and it's just like, wow, you know, we're, we're not doing anything with this money. In fact, we're, we're losing money by just having it sit in this mattress fund that we put it in. So I am definitely in line with what you're saying there. I mean, we, we came out of this whole Great Recession, I think, doing really well, on top of being able to pay off our unfunded liabilities and everything, and with the plan going forward to take care of all. and with the plan going forward to take care of all that. I think, I think this is something we definitely should be taking a look at.
So the only other piece of our current, the council's current fiscal policy is, which Sue pointed out today. Now, policy number seven restricts transfers from the reserves to no more than two percent. Well, the council technically violated that last year with the transfer for the current fiscal year pavement management program. In addition to, I, I mean, I, I think I would say that we, we agree, you know, with what our residents, through their work, positions on the Better Streets Commission. One hundred percent seems to be a very reasonable amount. It still allows us to have plenty in reserves. It will also allow us to do an additional Blanchard-like street per, per year if the council so, so chooses. So what I, I, I believe what we're recommending would be that reduce the, the bottom from what is currently two hundred percent down to one hundred percent. And the only other part would be, we would recommend just removing fiscal policy number seven because I'm not sure where that came from for only two percent. Does that-
Can I ask a question about this? The two percent, is that per fiscal year?
It doesn't say exactly.
So it's per day, so we're fine?
It doesn't say. Per year, yeah. That was my assumption as well. And so like I said, so we, so the city council technically violated it last year with the adoption of the budget because it was way more than two percent. And my recommendation would be just to remove it.
If, yeah, if, if it's not specified over which period of time the two percent is, then this is very vague.
If it's two percent per day or five years.
Yeah.
You didn't violate it.
I, I don't know where that came from, really.
So is there a, a general consensus to, for us to bring back a revised fiscal policy that would drop the, the, the lower part from two hundred to one hundred percent?
I think we see some thumbs up and head shaking yes.
Is that a, a general yes? All right. Okay. And is there also a consensus to remove policy number seven related to the transfers?
Yeah, make it four.
Two and a half.
Yes.
All right, awesome. All right, so we'll just keep walking through. We'll get to the library soon, I promise. So let's talk a little bit about the allocations that we're proposing for staffing changes. The, the bulk of the difference really revolves around our recommendation of eliminating the allocation for contract professional engineering services. We currently, we have four, four-day coverage, two by a city engineer level and two by an associate engineer level. And what we're recommending is that we instead reallocate those funds to a full-time permanent city engineer, which would come five days a week instead of the current four days coverage. And the, the, the main reasoning behind that, as I explained in the staff report, we did add in a public works director position, which I came to you guys quite early on when I first arrived. And the idea being that we would have potentially someone who could help oversee the engineers and potentially the, the work that's going on around the pavement management program. However, after being here for what is almost like ten months now, it's, it has blown, it has become very clear to me that we do not, you know, our city structure and the limited number of employees we have does not really lend itself to needing director levels. I mean, technically, generally, each employee is the director and everything else, all the way down to the bottom, for their functional area. And the other thing that, that I've also come to realize is that this, a city engineer is the type of person who's really knows public works projects the best. They're the ones that are the most educated and have the most experience with pavement management programs, street projects, putting up street signs, adding in new crosswalks, putting in new sidewalks potentially, all of those things that are really the most important to us as a city staff because, as you are well aware, our biggest asset is our streets. So having mixed all that up and considered it over the last ten months, it has become clear to me that what we really need is a permanent city engineer. So, and I think what's important to note, yes, is we would basically, our estimation is that the expenditure to the city for a five-day, full-time, permanent employee that's employed as a city engineer is essentially the same as what we're getting now for the two engineers at four days.
But you're at, you include benefits, which usually-
Yes, we include benefits as well.
Around twenty to twenty-five percent.
Yes, no, we include all that. So it's about a wash, and we ultimately are getting, and-
Quite right.
Well, we, we ran the numbers. I'm certainly happy to share those with you.
Believe you, but, okay. A lot for the part-time guys, then.
Typically, you know, contract services typically are higher than the cost of an actual city employee, so. But at the end of the day, you know, it also gives us a person who is part of the team, you know, not, I mean, Julie has done an awesome job, and so has my back the two we have. But when you have a full-time, permanent employee, they become part of the team, they're more wedded to the organization and the community. And given that our, really, the biggest thing that we have going on is our pavement management program and the, and now the potential of additional Blanchards every year, that's why we're recommending that we make this change and that we seek a new, a full-time city engineer.
Excuse me?
Yes.
So that, that includes the benefits, the pension, the vacation time, everything?
Yes.
I mean, if, if that's the case, Terry, we should have done this years ago.
But he wasn't here.
No, I know. But I'm just, I'm just saying, if, if, if there's no cost, I couldn't see why we wouldn't do this.
Why did we not have, you told me you had a city engineer at one time.
But that's true, but you got a full-time employee for two part-time people. It's, I mean, that's just good business sense.
Yeah, and somebody used it because they, you know, we contracted CSG and they move people around a lot, too, so.
Thanks, some of the, some of the idea, too, is we are getting a variety of expert opinion. But that's worth something. But I, I, I think this idea makes a lot of sense.
Of course.
And if the cost is basically a wash, it seems to me it's, it's a no-brainer.
And, and they would, they would be, just like the city planner, the building official, they would be responsible, sorry, my head's, they would be responsible for everything from top to bottom. So it, it is a little challenging probably finding someone, but I, you know, we've been very successful with finding Jeannie, the city planner, and Rob, the building official. So I anticipate we-
City manager?
The city manager, who was doing everything from top to bottom as well. So the only other allocation, and it's not a change, but we would like to request that we retain the allocation for the part-time administrative clerk. We've currently employed a temp who's not working at the full amount that this person would, but we would like to retain the option to hire that person because we do, we, we do believe we do have enough work. And, and, and in addition, if we go forward with the possibility of adding library services, that person may potentially also be available to, to add a little more robust, robustness to the hours of that. It's an idea. I have passed it by the library, and they seem like, they say that that could be something that could be worked out. So those would be the, the allocation for staffing changes, the main point.
Okay.
All right? So with that, let me just talk a little bit about, because we have a guest speaker.
Okay. So at, at this point, I just want to pause real fast. Councilmember Ann Standing has, has to, has to leave.
Okay.
But I otherwise endorse what you proposed.
That's good, all right.
We had a long conversation today, so.
Yes, we did.
Thank you. And thanks for the hard work on putting it together. I, I apologize, but I have to-
Don't forget your jacket.
Catch something, thank you.
Have a safe trip. So as I have mentioned to you guys, and to be honest with you, this is the thing, I'm, I mean, I love streets and they all need to be paid, but I'm way more excited about this possibility. I don't even know how it started, but I think I, I think I contacted the county library, just to start a conversation. I've mentioned it to you guys a bit on a number of occasions through various communications. And we actually met, was it last week for the third time, I think? We met for the third time to talk about it. And we kind of hashed out a plan, a, an approach. And so I'll give you a little bit about our recommendation. And then we have the, you're, you're the manager, right? At the Saratoga branch, which is the one that we are technically connected to. We'll get up and say a little something as well. So we are recommending an allocation of thirty-five thousand dollars for some improvements to what we lovingly refer to as the annex building. And the reason why is because we need to make some my, relatively minor modifications to improve, improve its usability. But there's also ADA requirements that it being used as a public building, it, it has to be upgraded. So the, 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 the library would potentially pay for flooring and painting, but we would need to make some adjustments to the building. And so after talking with the library staff, the idea is there the possibility of eight hours per week of services and programs. I think you'll speak a little bit more about what that might be. Yep. And there's also the, I don't know, if, have all of you been to the space next door? None of you have been? You've been?
I have.
You've been? But it's a sight to behold. You guys will have to come by and check it out.
I always think everyone's a post office.
Well, I know, it's hard to believe that that used to be City Hall and the post office.
And the post?
And the post office. Yes. And Sue used to do like three jobs, including being the postal clerk.
So the City Hall is bigger than that entire-
Oh, yeah, much. So, so the, so there, if you, for those of you who don't know, there is a lower piece, which you go in through the back. It's rectangular, roughly, I'd say ten by forty, maybe, twelve by forty. And what we would do in that space is create a secure location where what, what are, what we're calling vending machines could be, will be, could be installed to allow community access to library materials. And I did provide you with a graphic in the staff report, and I'm repeating it here, of, of, of what one of the machines would look like. And there would be two types. I'm going to let you explain the other type, but he can talk a little bit more about that. But in general, I, I think, you know, we have this building, which is, excuse me, by virtue of our zoning ordinance, very restricted to what uses can be, go there. I mean, I'm sure a small startup company would love to have a little spot, you know, kind of off in the country, near the town. But our zoning ordinance doesn't permit it. All, all we can have in that space are governmental or quasi-governmental uses. So in this case, you know, and, and I'm calling it the outpost, I hope you don't mind, the, the outpost of a library branch would, would meet those specifications. So, so we're very limited. So when I came up with this, the thought of this idea and started this conversation, I thought, what a great opportunity for us to use a building that we currently aren't using and may have difficulty finding someone, as well as to provide some form of community service. Because we, you know, other than City Hall, we don't really have any sort of space the community can use. And there is the potential, you know, based on maybe city staff being available beyond the hours for programming and services, that it could also be, you know, some form of, of gathering space for meetings of community organizations or, you know, whatever it might be. So with that, I'm going to introduce, and I apologize, I cannot remember your last name.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Mike Eitner. I'm the community librarian at the Saratoga Library. Really happy to be here tonight to talk to you about the potential for this project. When Terry reached out to us, the first thing I did was, we came over and showed me the space. And so he showed us the space, and I think his, his brain was churning with ideas, and mine was as well. And we're really excited about the opportunity for this building because this gives us a chance to bring library services to the people of Monteserino, in Monteserino, rather than going to Saratoga or Los Gatos. We know that people from Monteserino go to use both libraries. And this is a chance for us to bring service that no one else is trying. In addition to the vending unit here, which is, would be stocked full of materials, and you'd open it, and you could check out whatever you would like, we would also put in lockers, similar to Amazon lockers. We have, there are several library vendors who are selling these, and we would put holds in there. And so if a patron decided that they wanted to pick up some library material here at the Monteserino outpost, we would load them into the locker. They'd get a notification that it's here. They use their library card to open the lower part of the building. They can check them out whenever they want. The door pops open, and they're, the, the, the materials are checked out to them. So we think this gives us an opportunity, it's a, and there's a, it gives us an opportunity to expand when the library is available to people. And it's not something that we're doing at any of our other locations. We're looking at piloting vending machines, but they're in different communities, in community centers. This would be a dedicated library space. For the upper level of the, of the annex building, I think we're still in the process of trying to figure out exactly what that would look like. And I think that's what we would need. We need your help, the city council and the mayor, and some needs assessment with the people of Monteserino about what exactly, what type of library services would they like? Based on the demographics of Monteserino, Monteserino has far more children in a percentage-wise than Saratoga does. So perhaps those services are storytimes for kids. So what time would that be? What time would be the best time to do that? What time would be the best to reach the, the people who are interested in those services? So those are the kinds of conversations that we need to have about what the, the upper space, as I like to call it, would look like. We also need to figure out staffing, and that's something that I think will be a continuing, ongoing kind of discussion with Terry, I think the city council and the library, with the county librarian Nancy Howe, myself and the deputy county librarian, to figure that piece of it out. We think we can start with eight hours a week, but we need to figure out exactly what eight hours that would be, what would be most useful to the people here. And the twenty-four-seven access to the lower level, I should back up a little bit. There's a software out there that allows people to, essentially, it's a secure building. You walk up with your library card, scan your library card. The door opens, you go in, you do what you're doing, check, use the vending machine, check out your hold, and then you leave. And libraries across the country are using this product, this software. And so we think this would be a great opportunity to offer that here. It's something that we'd be offering here, and it's not being offered anywhere else.
Sounds very cool.
Yeah, thanks.
Questions? Yes. I think, I think this is a great initiative, but I would be a little worried about having twenty-four hours a day access to the building, even with a library card, which is probably traceable. I would be worried about vandalism, things like, ugly things like that.
I think that's something that we can talk about and address. Maybe it's not twenty-four-seven access. It could be, we could discuss what that access would be. We could also, when we're looking at working on the building, making sure that the, that only a certain part of the building is open twenty-four-seven, not the entire building, and that what's in that part of the building is secured. So there's a lot of options. And we can also look to what other libraries have done about when, how they provide access to those spaces, when the library isn't staffed, and see what those, see what, those hours and how that would work here.
And just to speak to security a little bit, part of the reason why this seemed particularly workable with this structure, did you say you had been over there? Yeah. Is that the improvements we would be recommending to be made would include to make it so you can cordon off the lower area. And I, I, I do agree that maybe, you know, twenty-four-seven is, is necessarily a bit too much. But we would also include cameras. There would be surveillance.
Send some security cameras.
So there, there, you know, which would hopefully be a deterrent. But, you know, these are, and, and it could also be a matter of us moving forward with a certain program and see how it works. And if we start to have some issues, you know, to make adjustments and, and changes.
We certainly want this to be flexible and to be a pilot that works for everyone involved. We're, this is a chance for us to design library services, which is not something that we get to often do.
Do you know what your customer base is going to be?
Do you know what your customer base is going to be? Are you going to, are you going to look at kids in elementary school, high school, senior citizens?
Well, we have some demographic information, and we also have our current, we also know how many Monticerino residents currently have library cards with us. And so, we'll be, there's that piece of it. There's also a piece of reaching out to the people in the community in a bit more targeted way, and talking to users and non-users here specifically in Monticerino about what it is that they would like to see, or what are the barriers that they are seeing to coming to the Saratoga Library, to see if we can wrap that into expanding the base of the registered users of Monticerino into the Santa Clara County Library.
And I just think the general idea of, you know, you order the books you want, they deliver it to a box, and, you know, instead of our residents having to drive over to Saratoga, I mean, if you could just, you know, pop by next door and grab those materials, it would just be a really nice service to provide.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be really nice. And those are, as I like to refer to them, those are guaranteed satisfactions. If it's something you wanted, and we delivered it to a location that's convenient to you. I should also say that the library has set aside some resources for this project also. We're not relying, we wouldn't rely completely on the city of Monticerino to fund this project.
And, you know, they haven't made it public, but it is, you know, equal to or more than, you know, what our, our commitment would be.
Secret slush fund that we have over there.
So, any additional questions on that? Is there a general consensus to, to continue to proceed with the library on trying to make this happen?
Yes.
All right. Well, that is good news indeed.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
So, the only other thing, the only other item that's a bit, you know, to note that's a bit out of the ordinary is, staff is recommending an allocation of $30,000 for consultant services to prepare an updated study for road impact and storm drain fees. And the reason why we're recommending this is that, number one, the road impact fee, which is the fee that the city assesses to new construction and additions, which is basically an offset to damage caused by construction vehicles to the roads. It's similar in many ways to the refuse vehicle impact fee, but this one's targeted strictly at people who are constructing. And it hasn't been updated in over 10 years, so we recommend hiring a consultant to take a look at that and determine if it, if it has the potential to be raised. And then, the storm drain fees, that one has not been updated in more than two decades. And what, what, what I think is important there is, in terms of our obligations to the clean water program, the fees that we collect are only a partial amount of what we have to pay to the clean water program to, you know, meet our obligation. So, what that currently means is, the city's general fund is subsidizing the, the clean water program services. So, staff is recommending allocation for consultant services to take a look at these. And again, this is just a study, just like the refuse vehicle impact fee, and based on the findings, we would bring those to you for your consideration, with lots of community outreach. Which, as you know, I'm all on board for that.
Touche.
No, seriously. We had, how many people did we have at the hacienda? It was an awesome turnout. So, any questions on that? So, I, maybe, that's really the end of our presentation. There are members of the audience here that may wish to speak.
Okay.
On the proposed...
Great. So, at this time, I would like to open it up to members of the audience. Would anybody like to make any comments about our budget process or our proposed budget? Any of the items that we discussed tonight? Great.
I see the word fees in there. Do I understand that we're going, that you're going to reconsider the topic of fees for road impact again? Because you did that once, as I recall.
Do you want to handle that one?
Yes.
What exactly are...
The, I think you're probably referring to...
A study for road impact and storm drain fees. What about that?
Well, as, as I explained...
Maybe I didn't catch everything.
Sure. The road impact fee, it's a current fee the city has. It's assessed when a person takes out a building permit for a new, a new home or for a remodel or an addition.
Those fees are already established.
They are already established, and the idea with the road impact fee is that it's compensation for the damage done by the construction vehicles.
Only for that?
Only for that.
And it isn't fees like we talked about a few months ago?
Correct. It's the, the refuse vehicle, the garbage truck fee. That's a separate fee. That's a separate...
That is not this.
That is not this. You are correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I wasn't sure about that.
Absolutely.
Because you don't need to discuss it twice since you've made a decision.
Well, the council, we may bring that one back to the council at some point in the future.
It was to come back in the future.
It is, because the council, the city council just tabled the item, so it, we will likely bring it back.
So, we are talking about the possibility of discussing garbage truck fees.
At some point in the future, a date to date, a date to be determined.
Will that be included in the study?
Well, we've already conducted a study for that one.
The one you're talking about?
This, these are separate, this is a separate study for, for the construction vehicles, not the refuse vehicles.
Yeah, okay.
All right?
I think.
You know, you feel, you, you know my number, and you know where my desk is, and you've come by before, you feel free to come by any, anytime.
We're talking about $30,000, and I was wondering if that is for the other fee?
It is not.
It is not.
It is not.
That one's already been paid for, and it's already been completed.
I thought you had, I knew you had already made a decision. Thank you.
Okay. No, I, I didn't quite get what you said at the end, that we've already made a decision, or?
Yes, I...
Oh, thank you.
I hope I'm not confused about this, but when we talked about the Blanchard Drive improvements, there was a plan or a suggestion to be discussed about the, putting fees on the garbage trucks and things like that.
Correct. Right. And we tabled that. We're not going to discuss it, but it could probably come back up at another point later on in the year, but we're not discussing it for this particular budget period.
Yes, and nor for the $30,000.
No, it's not. No.
That's a different, that's construction trucks and stuff.
Exactly.
Which is already on the books and has been on the books.
Right, but it is, it was studied over 10 years ago, so my suggestion is that we look at it again.
But not include the garbage.
Not including the garbage.
I just wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, at this point, are there any final questions for staff? At this point, are we, are we willing to accept the motion?
I have questions.
Oh, we have questions?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's what we're here for.
I didn't read this thing.
Given the citizens their money's worth.
I didn't read this thing to not have some questions on budgets, since I've lived this my whole life.
I am so happy.
That was, that was so...
No, it's not. Because I have comments, too.
I have, okay, first, first thing, number eight of the original discussion assigned by Dave Baxter on Resolution 3652 says, it goes against our user fees because it says we seek full recovery. And, and we don't seek full recovery because we just voted today to not seek full recovery. Yeah.
I did notice that as well.
That's this investment policy?
Excuse me, yeah, it does, it does, excuse me. Resolution 3090, is that the most current, correct?
3652 is what I'm looking at, because it was the start of this thing. So, I'm guessing that's the one that we still look at.
I do, too.
That's number eight. It's in the beginning of the, of the, is it the beginning of the staff report?
No, but that's the investment policy. No, you were talking about the one before that.
No, I've got another question on the investment policy, but it's, it's about user fees that we're, we're supposed to try to recover 100% of our user fees, but we just voted against that.
To raise to an extent legally possible. Yeah.
So, we don't.
We'll see. It doesn't really have to, but. And when was that? We might have, in 2004, because costs were much lower.
Right. That's, I'm guessing that's one of the reasons that we've waited so long to raise our user fees.
It could be.
I don't know. That...
I mean, we certainly...
So, if you want to change that.
Well, I don't know, but, but that one just kind of like goes against what we just voted for.
And I made the same observation myself when I was doing this.
Okay, on our investments. We, and Burton's been part of this, but years ago, we tried to do something to increase our return on our investment, and it seems like it never goes anywhere, and I think we really should investigate that, because we do, we're sitting there with $6 million in there that is invested, and we're not making any money on it. It's just, right, Burton? Okay.
I, I think we also brought that up at our goal-setting session.
We did.
And I think with the, with the new tools that are available, before, we didn't have a lot of options. But I think as we went to the Cities Association a couple of years ago, when it was in San Jose, there were a number of companies that were targeting small cities like ours, and it's probably time to really take a look at them.
I think it should, Terry, I think it should come up in a future council meeting. The 15K for a charging station, that one bothers me because we could have had it free four years ago.
Right.
And we voted against it. I'm probably the only one here that has an all-electric car, but, you know, I, I think we should also go talk to Dave Baxter, because he does that for a living, and we might be able to get some, if we do decide to do it, we might get it for a better price.
Which one is that?
The 15...
We don't have any pricing yet, and that was just under recommendation of Dave here.
Okay, I'm for it, but I just think, I think we should, we might be able to get it less expensive.
And I think that the main reason we, we didn't vote for it the last time was because it, it was, it was a grant.
But it was going to be for free for us.
There, there's just not available.
I know.
And I, and I did speak to another councilperson when I called about this. One of the, the bigger picture idea is that we, as a government, are trying to help facilitate a larger network to increase the viability, as this is an option. I mean, it's, you know, there's nothing mandatory about it. Jim Helmer is the one who's been talking to me about it, and he, this is what he recommended, and I agreed. It's just our, it would be our way, small as it is, to help promote that larger, you know, element of providing a network for charging stations to promote.
Oh, I'd, I'd be all for it. I just, I just think, when we do it, we should talk to Dave Baxter, because...
Yes, and we absolutely can.
Give us a deal.
And we only got a, a general idea. And just one other thing on that, as which I mentioned when I spoke to the councilperson. One of the big changes, though, over the time was, most years ago, they, no one charged for the electricity, but that's completely changed now. So, once installed, there's, there would be no cost.
If you put your credit card in.
Yes. That's everywhere now.
Okay, just two more real quick things. I still think our sweepers are a hoax, since I've been living here 20 years and I've only seen them once.
They do come by.
I did see it once.
I have pictures.
So, I don't come in my neighborhood. A 20, 20K for bicycle and pedestrian safety projects. If, if we were going to spend that money, I would, I would be for spending more money on the bicycle and pedestrian safety.
Well, let me speak a little bit to that in general. The other conversation that we had with the Better Streets Commission was, you know, we have a Safer to School Phase 1 study that was done. I think I provided links to you guys. We have our new Bike and Ped Master Plan. So, I really wanted to get a conversation started with the school and the officials there on what from those plans, you know, based on professional advice, could we potentially work on? So, I got some really great feedback from the commission, and we had, like I said, we had the principal come and the Safer to School coordinator for the district come. And so, I, I think it's highly likely we will be coming up with options that will spend more than that, but we will have to come to the council to get your okay to do that.
Look at Cupertino's done a really good job with their bike pass.
Yeah. Now, we, once I went over there that one day, I don't know if I've shared it with everyone, I may have, I went over to, to observe the pickup time. I, that was my mind started twirling around, we really need to do some stuff to make the school and getting to and from there easier, safer, and less GHG-oriented.
And my, my last thing was, it said the TA, TEA was 7%. I thought we got 7 and 1/4%.
I thought we were at 7.
I thought, oh, was, that's it? Okay. I thought we got a little more than that. I just had a question on that.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
No. I do want to ask regarding the city's policy for investments. I mean, is there a consensus to look at that? Because, you know, it does require us some time to, to do some outreach, to, I actually, when I first started here, I, for better or worse, someone emailed me, come meet with me to, to hear about investments. And I thought, oh, cool, I'll go check it out. Now, they won't leave me alone. But there are obviously options out there, and communities do use them, that have higher returns. But I really would like to, to, to seek a consensus of the council on, if you're interested in that, before we would start doing some work on it.
I, I think two of us are, are for it. I see two other heads nodding, so.
So, at least for it.
I think that's a consensus.
There's no reason not to at least look at it.
And I'm gonna...
Yes. I'm sure Marshall would be for it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, if there's no more, Councilmember Turner?
No, I just need to go. I have work tomorrow at 7:00.
Oh, all right, well, we'll wrap it up then. So, my, my quick comment then was that I just want to, for the record, just have everybody paying attention to the police fees that we are paying, because I don't think we'll ever have a period where Los Gatos will say, ah, gee, you know, we just don't need to raise the fees this year. And within five years, we're going to be paying over $1 million for our police service. I don't know if anybody noticed that in the, in the budget projections.
Yes, and we, we only receive a fraction of that in the parcel tax. It's about, what, a fifth?
About $190,000.
Yeah.
The general fund is going to pay over $600,000 for the service.
So, we, you know...
Get that other $100,000.
We, we do, you know, pay a lot out of our general fund every year.
Right.
For that.
And, and so, I know that a lot of, a lot of angst has gone into really talking about raising fees and impact fees and cost recoveries, but, you know, it's getting more expensive to run our pretty little city here. And I, I just wanted that to be on the record, so. Let's get Councilmember Turner home and in bed, so she can...
I have to teach class tomorrow.
Teach. So, at this point, we are supposed to make a motion to accept the report, or?
No, we're just looking for direction tonight, because it's a workshop.
Okay, so I think we've given directions throughout this period.
Yes, we received clear direction, so we will compile a final budget, update, make proposed revisions to the fiscal policy, and bring all that back. I think it's the first meeting in June.
No, the 19th.
The 19th, sorry.
First meeting is the last day.
Thank you, you're right. The first meeting is, we're not, we're not meeting. So, so, June 19th.
Okay.
All right, so we have just the last few points.
All right. So, at this point, we will move to councilmember comments. No? No?
I don't have it.
All right, I, I won't make any...
For Rowena, I don't have it.
All righty.
One comment.
What, what comment?
One comment, sorry. I just wanted to draw everybody's attention to the, what's going on with San Jose Water Company.
Oh, yeah.
They have proposed a merger with a Connecticut-based water company, which to me makes absolutely no sense. There will be no synergy between these two companies. One is on the East Coast, one is on, obviously on the West Coast. There's also a hostile bid, as San Jose Water Company calls it, by Cal Water, which is right next to San Jose Water Company, and there would be a lot of synergy. But for some reason, they are very aggressively fighting this hostile takeover bid. There's a lot going on there, a lot of politics, a lot of, I don't know, I don't want to say anything necessarily wrong about it, but...
Something's going on there.
Something doesn't smell right.
Have they been calling, have they been calling Rowena and Burton, have they been Rowena and Burton, have they been calling you about this?
Uh, I've gotten a couple of calls from John Tang, just to kinda fill me in on it.
Yeah, we've all had calls, I think.
I think he's making the rounds. Now, does the San Jose Water also, um, own a company in Texas?
Yeah, this would, um, let's say, they would, they would serve California, Texas, Connecticut, and Maine after the merger, which-
Makes sense.
I mean, why not Canada or Portugal? Makes no sense.
Or China.
All righty. Uh, so, any, any committee, okay, nothing much on the committee, except that, uh, our youth commission met, and we are looking to host another ice cream social before our May the- fifteenth meeting, thank you. I gotta remember which one of those I'm looking at.
Weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight, so we'll have them here at five-thirty, official festivities start at six, and, um, invitations have gone out to at least some of the usual suspects, so feel free to invite anyone you would like to come, and we hope it'll be a fun affair. Okay, so, Council, uh, city manager report.
I will provide a report in, um, in an electronic format to you.
Okay, great.
Before the end of the week.
Uh, just, just one thing to note is that the Cities Association had previously passed a, um, the okay to send the county a letter asking them to, uh, to postpone submitting a bid for new ambulance service. Uh, at the same time, the city of San Jose started their own letter-writing campaign, and we participated in that letter. So there is, uh, something amiss apparently in the ambulance bidding business, so.
And I'll provide a copy of that with my correspondence to you guys.
Yeah. All right, this meeting's adjourned, thank you very much, everybody, for a good meeting.
Get some rest.